Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, this is a web-based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. This session is being audio recorded. Please be advised that today we are also recording the video of the proceedings. We will use, we will not use the chat feature during this meeting. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Board members and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting. Public comment will only be accepted during the public hearing portion of the meeting. The chair will announce when the hearing is open and will ask for public comment. Public comments will not be accepted after the hearing is closed. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff or the chair. When the hearing opens, you may give your comments in the following manner. Use the raise hand feature in Zoom and wait to be called on. Before the hearing closes, we will ask for any new comments from people who are only able to join by phone and unable to use the raised hand feature. If multiple people attempt to speak at once, staff will help moderate. State your name and address for the record. If multiple people wish to speak, the meeting moderator will call on you individually. Please listen for instructions. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions during this process, you may call our staff at 860-444-5813 after the meeting has ended. Okay, first order of business on our agenda is to appoint the alternates. And I'm going to call the meeting officially to order. So the Zoning Board of Appeals Public Meeting of the Town of Waterford is now in session this first day of October 2020, 6:30 PM. All decisions of the board are final in accordance with the Connecticut General Statute, Section 8, Section 8-8B. Any person aggrieved by any decision of the board take appeal to the Superior Court. The appeal shall be commenced in accordance with Section 8-8FNG. Within 15 days, days of the date, the notice of the decision was published by the general statutes. The Zoning Board of Appeals Recording Secretary will now take a roll call.
Joshua Friedman, absent. Kathy Newland.
Here.
Ann Darling, absent. Michelle Cripps.
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Michelle, thank you. Warren McKenzie.
Present.
Jason Marieski.
Here.
Danielle McCarty, absent. And Darcy Van Ness.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will appoint Jason Marieski to be seated for Ann Darling, and we will appoint Darcy Van Ness to be seated in for Josh Friedman. Okay, next order of business, the approval of the August 13th and September 3rd meeting minutes. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve minutes?
I'll approve the minutes. I move that we approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? So moved. Okay, receipt of applications. Do we have new applications on the table?
Yep, we do. We will have one application next month to hear. It is for Ellen Ward Road.
Okay. And so now, next order of business, public hearing. Application ZBA-20-5, appeal of Nibel and Gloria Petrini, owners and applicant, and James Bernardo LS, agent at 23 Division Street, R20 Zone. Variance is requested from zoning regulations, Section 4.4.1, front yard setback variance of 20 feet, who allow for a front yard setback of 30 feet. Variance is required to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling as proposed on Planned Entitled Zoning Location Survey, property of Nibel and Gloria Petrini, for the property located at 23 Division Street dated August 28th, 2020. I do have application exhibit list. Number Exhibit 1 is application and supporting documents. Exhibit 2 is a survey planned entitled Zoning Location Survey, property of Nibel and Gloria Petrini, for property located at 23 Division Street in Waterford. The Exhibit 3 is a staff report memo titled Application ZBA-20-5. And Exhibit 4 is the copy of the notification letter to the applicant regarding the requirement to mail to notices with the public hearing of owners within 150 feet of the property and dated by September 16th, 2020. And Exhibit 5 is condensed comments dated September 15th. And Exhibit 6 is certified certificates of mailing dated September 21st, 2021. Okay. Jim, do you want to take it away?
Okay, I will. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so my name is Jim Bernardo. I'm a Lancer there. My address is 102A Spithead Road in Waterford. I'm here tonight representing Neville and Gloria Petrini for their property located at 23 Division Street. The applicant proposes to construct in addition onto the south side of the house. The house was built in 1972, prior to the current regulations. When this was built, the front yard setback was 25 feet. The current regulations require a 50-foot front yard setback. This isn't a CAM zone, but the CAM requirements, the report is not required because it's only a minor addition to an existing residential structure. This property has been in the Petrini family since '72 when they, when they first bought the property. So Neville and his wife Gloria recently moved into this house, but it has been in their family since, since the original construction. The couple of issues that are, that are standing out is it's, it is located in a flood zone, both VE zone, which is elevation 15, which is close to Jordan Cove. I'm not sure if, I know Abby's not there, but Jill, if you can pull up the site plan exhibit.
Yes, and you're going to pick the PDF.
All right. Or Anna, whoever can do it. Okay.
Can you see it?
That's the exhibit list.
Our screen, yep. Just scroll down to the right plan. There you go.
Okay. Well, actually, if you wanted, just leave it at that view right there for now. As you can see, I've shown on my survey, the other two houses to the north are also both constructed at approximately 28 feet off the front street line. And as a matter of fact, this commission granted a variance for the next lot to the north, which would be three lots away, for a front yard setback variance. I believe it was just at the last meeting for the same condition. So this would be the third lot to the south of the one that was granted just at the last meeting. So I'm not sure if you guys can point to the flood zone lines. And if you can, I'm not sure if you can blow, bring my site plan up to a larger view there. So there we go, okay. So you can see, there you go, there's the, right where the cursor is, that's the VE zone, elevation 15 on, on the side where the cursor is. And then there's that dotted line on the right of that where it says AE elevation 12. So that's the AE flood zone line. And that continues all the way up going to the right, just off the proposed addition. And it actually goes through the, where I have the label says wood deck.
Of course.
I lost your cursor. Oh, there it is there, okay. So yeah, the flood zone line continues up to there. So we also have the AE zone. Now, currently, that deck does not conform to the flood regulations, and they're working with a structural engineer to make that compliant with the flood regulations. And that would remove, remove the structure from the flood zone requirements. So one of the reasons that we're trying to not go out the back and comply with a front yard setback is we don't want the addition to go into the AE zone, which would require the entire structure to be compliant with the, with the AE flood requirements as well as require flood insurance. So what the applicant is trying to do is add a 10-foot addition to the south side of the house. It would be an addition for, add on to the kitchen and to the living room. There's, there is a building plan in your application package that shows what the addition's going to look like. And in addition, they'll, they will, with that space, add a garage underneath the, the house on the south side and a new driveway. A couple of things, I know in the staff memo that was passed out, there's a couple of things that this commission has to review as part of the zoning regulations. And one of them, under their power, under your powers and duties, 27.2.3, it says to determine and vary the application and provisions of these regulations in harmony with their general purpose and intent, with due consideration for ensuring the public health, safety, convenience, welfare. I'm not going to read the whole paragraph, but basically, you know, one of the reasons you can vary a zoning regulation is if you find that there's an undue hardship if you enforce it. And again, the fact that this house was built in '72, under previous set of regulations, to enforce the 50-foot, current 50-foot front yard setback, and the FEMA regulations would make this difficult to, for this property owner to put the addition on the house. Also in addition, and I know this has been covered by the town attorney at the, just at the last meeting, is if you go by your Section 27.5 with your criteria for decision, there's items A through K. And again, I don't really want to go through them all, but if you have your regulations in front of you or the staff memo, I think you will find that what we're requesting is in, is in compliance with the criteria for decision. The lot is served by municipal water and sewer, so it's not going to have any impact on, on septic or anything like that. It's in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood, as you can see. And again, I apologize. I'm actually at a Starbucks in Virginia right now. I apologize for the background noise. There's, you know, it's going to be in harmony and in character with the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. It's not going to have any obstruction of light or air, any emission of noise and light. And as you can see, as I go down through items A through K, I think we're in compliance with the criteria for this commission to make a decision in favorable of this zoning variance. So let me see if I have any other notes. That's all I have for my notes. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm sure.
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
I don't.
Okay. We are now, are there any staff comments?
As mentioned in the staff report, you, you may want to consider whether or not this proposal is the minimum possible configuration to vary the zoning regulations and whether or not a legal hardship exists in order to allow such a variance to be approved. And the town's attorney may want to weigh in on this as well.
Hi, this is Attorney Rob Avina, Town Attorney Rob Avina. I just wanted to address the board for a minute. I know you have your applications in front of you and the survey of the property. Quick question to Jim Bernardo. Jim, did you notice or did you note that the house immediately south of them? Did you check that one? It looks to be that the front of that house is 50 feet back on the setback.
I did, actually. That's a, that's a newer house. That house was not built in the 70s, as was the other lots to the north. So I believe that does comply with the current regulations. And I believe it is also, I guess, a newer house.
Okay, and they did get notice of this hearing by certified mail?
By certificates of mailing, which were required by the regulations, correct? We don't do certified mail. Okay.
No, I, well, you know, they got notice as far as you care. It went into the post office. We know all about the post office. My, my other question for Jim is the, as stated by a zoning officer, of course, we have two jobs. One is to determine legal hardship. I believe your argument here, which I'll go over the board and I'll, I'll speak to them in a minute after the close of the public hearing as to my recommended procedure. But I, I do ask you that under legal hardship, you're discussing the overlay of this zone by new zoning setback requirements. Do you have any history on that, Jim, or is that just the way it is?
I'm not quite sure what your question is, Rob, as far as.
Yeah, in other words, now saying that the lot is under a different setback requirement than when the lot was originally developed?
Correct. I, I did research on that, and it was, back when this was built in the 70s, the front yard setback for this zone was 25, was 25 feet. And so I'm not sure when that was changed to 50 feet, but I know back in the 70s, it was 25 feet for the R, the R20 zone.
Okay, and, and you do understand and appreciate that there's nothing about the non-conforming structure that the town can require you to adhere to that 50 feet, right? The non-conforming part of the lot right now is the existing structure.
That's correct, yep.
And so you're really asking for permission and need legal hardship to add in addition that will not comply with the present zone?
That's correct. And again, I, the argument is that it won't comply with the present zoning, but if we were to try to go out the rear side of the building, we would be in, we'd have to become compliance with the flood regulations as well. That would kick in a whole new set of regulations. So that, that's the hardship that we're claiming, correct?
No, understand. It's, it's, there is a reasonable use now, but your argument is that inherently your folks have a right to expand within the zoning with a variance beyond what is a reasonable. I mean, I suppose some of the argument is that they, according to your submission, I believe, the living area is currently 1,160 square feet?
Is that what I have? Yeah.
Yeah.
On the tax card?
Yep.
I'll take your word for it. I can't, it's definitely on the tax card. I'm looking.
Yep.
Yes, 1,160 square feet, correct, yep.
Yeah, and you're, and I'm sorry, the square footage of the proposed addition?
Is 280 square feet.
Thanks. Any, I appreciate the comments, in addition, additional comments, Jim. Does the board have any questions during this public hearing, either for me or the applicant?
Um, I have a question for the applicant, Darcy Van Ness. I, I guess I just wanted to know what sort of the plan was regarding like erosion and sediment control, just like throughout the construction process, to make sure that we're not impacting the environment in any way.
Sure, I can, oh, I can address that. Actually, something I didn't, hold on just a minute. Okay, what I didn't address with my presentation was just to the rear of the house, there's an existing in-ground pool that's going to be removed. That, that elevation is going, is going to stay the same, and they're going to fill that in. So we do have areas shown for temporary sediment fence for when that filling takes place. And that would also encompass the area for the excavation of the foundation for the new house. And that's been reviewed by the town staff, including Maureen Fitzgerald. And I don't believe staff had any concerns with that, that procedure.
That's correct. Okay, any other comments from the board? Okay. We will now enter the public hearing. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak regarding this application?
I don't think anybody's there.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody that would like to speak opposed to this application? Okay. Hearing none. I will close the public hearing.
Yeah, Madam Chair, can we do that by a motion, please?
Sure. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I will motion to close the public hearing.
Can I have a second?
I will second it.
Thank you. All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. We will move to application review. So do I have anybody on the board that would like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, if I could speak, Attorney Avina. Way we set up your, kind of your new, new agenda is if there are application reviews from last month, they're going to appear under number five. And right now, you don't have any from last month to deliberate. You'll notice that under number seven, we have new business discussion of this particular application. So you're not there yet.
Okay. So we have no other applications to review. Do we have any old business?
No, no business.
Okay, so we'll move on to new business and discussion and consideration for application ZBA-20-5.
Madam Chair, before anyone makes a motion on this one, I wanted, Town Attorney Rob Avina, I wanted to address the board vis a vis my discussion with the board and the special meeting earlier this month. Discussion and consideration application number ZBA-20-5 is on your agenda tonight. And, but the reason I did that, or suggested to the staff we do that, is to speak to you about a procedure that I would like to institute, that in fact, I would like to go over with staff this particular application, and I can answer some questions with the board tonight. But we'd rather address a motion, two types of motions, really, a motion to approve the variance, a motion to deny the variance. And we would do those in draft form for your next meeting. In so doing, I'd like to reserve for tonight a discussion of the exhibits and the application. And then staff and I will have a chance to go through those considerations that Jim Bernardo mentioned, A through K of the zoning regulations, so that when you see the draft motions next month, they'll be on your agenda, and you'll be able to go through the proposed motions addressing those criteria of the ZBA and the statute and the, and the regulations. It's just, this one obviously is a little bit easier than we can talk about it tonight. But in the future, as they will maybe perhaps get more complicated, it gives you folks a chance to let the staff accept the exhibits, get copies out to people who didn't get a particular exhibit except at the public hearing. If there are public comments, we can get the public comments around to everyone, and then you can deliberate on it, once you've reviewed those exhibits, letters, comments, even the videotape if you need it. So I just wanted to sort of get into that mode and then continue that mode through with the commission or with the board. And I think once you get on a roll with it, the applicants will understand that you submit, then you have a public hearing, and then at the next meeting of the board, you will be hearing your decision or the vote on the decision. So that's, that's what I was thinking. Thank you.
What you're looking for us to do is table this to the next meeting.
Yes, but at the same time, you're in, you're in the, you know, non-public deliberation phase. So if anyone on the board has a question of staff or me right now that they'd like to consider, thinking about for next month, we can also do those now.
Okay, does anybody else on the board have any comments or questions?
Kathy, can I just add a comment to that? I know it's, it's not regarding this application, but I would like to go through, Rob, on this, that it's important to tell the commission members that they cannot solicit any information if the public hearing has been closed. So if you could go over that process real briefly with them, Rob?
Is this Jim? Yeah.
Yes, yes, please.
Be careful, you really can't speak now, but you're lucky you didn't get cut off. It must be Virginia time. So yes, you only can use the common knowledge that you already have as a board member and what's been introduced as exhibits. Of course, the courts have also held that if you drive by the property now, that's fine. That might be a common occurrence, but you can't go particularly out of your way or something. That should be done prior to the public hearing. With that one exception of just your general knowledge, your decision should be based upon what has been introduced at the public hearing and what I can discuss with you as the town attorney on the law, the statutes, the case law, and the regulations. So that's basically what, what Jim's pointing out. This is not the time to search Google or the internet for flood planes or other issues. Those, if you had flood plane or elevation issues, those should be asked at the public hearing so the applicant has an opportunity to address them. So there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so do I have a motion from anybody on the board to table the application in front of us?
I'll make a motion to table the application in front of us to the next meeting in November.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jason. And all in favor? Or any more discussion, I'm sorry. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Next new business is the 2021 meeting schedule. There is an error on the schedule that was put in our agendas. The December meeting says it's 12/0/2021. And I think we've established that date is the first.
Yes.
So it's actually 12/1/2021. With that amendment, we need to approve the schedule for 2021. Right here, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 schedule.
With the amendment?
With the amendment.
Thank you.
And I will second.
I will second it.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
I'm sorry.
No correspondence.
Okay. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. And any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? So moved. Meeting adjourned.
All right, thanks, everybody.
See you next month.
See you November.
Don't forget to vote.